Third, 2023 Special Board of Education Meeting for Bensonville School District Two. Welcome to those of you who are streaming the meeting this evening and to those of you who've joined us. Thank you for joining us. It's wonderful to see you all here. This is a very important meeting for BSD Two, and at this time, I call the meeting to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mrs. Die?
Here.
Mr. Ladadio?
Here.
Mr. Stoltman?
Here.
Mr. Dr. McCullough?
Here.
Mrs. Leyva?
Here.
Ms. Parthamos?
Here.
Mrs. Krajecchi?
Here.
Well, we have a quorum. And please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Ms. Snyder, do we have any public comment this evening?
No, we do not.
All right, having none, Dr. McCloskey, presentations.
Sure, so I would just like to take this opportunity to sincerely thank Cindy and Chris for your time on the board. I only had the pleasure of working with both of you for a year, but it is very clear, your dedication and your support of the school district and of our students. So thank you for your support for me, as well as for District Two. I do have a gift for each of you.
Thank you.
And so I just wanted to sincerely thank the two of you.
Thank you very much. Presenting, would you like to share a few words?
Sure. I don't like talking. I'm lying, I love to talk. I just really want to say, you know, thank you to all my fellow board members and previous board members who some are up there. It's been an amazing eight years, and I just would like to say, we hired an awesome superintendent and keep her here for a long time. Oncoming board members, I wish you guys the best of luck. Reach out to people who are mentors. Past board members can always be mentors to you, and that's always a good thing, especially because we're going to have a young board, minus Bob, because he's old.
You are the old guy, that's why.
But honestly, you know, I love this work, I'm very passionate about it, anyone that knows me knows that, starting as PTA president, vice president, coming up to the board for eight years, really getting involved in doing things for kids. That's the most important thing. Always remember, our kids are the reason we're here, and that's why we do what we do.
You're here.
As soon as we get away from that, stop, don't do it anymore. That's my advice. So, thank you, guys, I appreciate all of you.
Ms. Krajecchi, your service to our school board, you've left your thumbprint, and for that, we're all grateful, because the ideas, the thoughts, the work that you've put into this has been very meaningful to the district, so thank you.
Thanks. I am personally going to miss you. When you got on, you were there to watch over me. We've been together for a long time, and you were always, everything you do is for the kids. You were a great board member, a great to the kids in this town.
Thank you.
I've got a few things I'd like to share, too, in acknowledging the work that the board has done over the past two to four years. I've been very fortunate to serve Bensonville School District Two. No asset in the community is more valuable than the children who reside within it. Throughout my tenure, I've fought hard to serve our students, staff, and community, and we have celebrated many successes, all of us working together. The successes we must celebrate are the successes of the current board, the leadership team, teachers, transportation professionals, paraprofessionals, nurses, and all of our staff within the district. We all successfully, and get ready for this, transitioned to experienced and highly interned superintendents, appointed a new superintendent who was experienced, I'm sorry, with experience, who is bilingual and has a background in instructional leadership, implemented a new process to evaluate the superintendent that is aligned to the strategic plans and the goal, strategic plan and the goals embedded in the superintendent's contract, provoked significant changes in student services to enhance the district's ability to serve and assist students and families with special needs, settled a new collective bargaining agreement during a time of extreme inflationary pressures. For the first time in BSD Two, we utilized interest-based bargaining to cultivate a collaborative environment for negotiations. The negotiation resulted in a very positive experience for all parties and yielded an agreement that demonstrated our appreciation to our teachers and made an investment in our children's futures while being respectful to hard-working taxpayers. The new CBA did not require the new, the collection of any new revenue or taxes to fund it. Engaged the district in a safety and security audit to ensure district policies focused on, that are focused on safety are effective. Focused the district on curricular change related to mathematics to enhance academic achievement in this subject matter. That's not the only content area, but in that content already, we see growth, and mathematics is the universal language. Invested in enhancements focused on student learning at Blackhawk Middle School, which again, required neither debt, which debt service today is incredibly high and expensive, or taxes. Engaged the district in a strategic planning process, and thank you, Mrs. Krajecchi, for taking a lot of lead on this, that resulted in a meaningful, data-driven strategic plan that was informed by all stakeholders. Now, while all of these things were achieved, we were also doing something else, and that is, we navigated the COVID pandemic in a way that preserved student learning and student welfare. And a good example of that is the food delivery, thanks to our bus drivers who delivered meals to students who had a need for those meals. So, thank you to all of our board members, all of our leadership, all of our stakeholders who participated in this work. Serving vulnerable populations requires decision-making that is grounded in ethics and that honors our moral responsibility. Part of honoring your moral responsibility is protecting district assets and investing in the future of our children. In addition to the successes that we all celebrate tonight, I have resisted efforts by others to offer political favors as schools are not an acceptable venue for such behavior. During my tenure on the school board, I prevented attempts to fill a vacated board seat with a political appointment of the spouse of a village trustee by the village president and one of his handlers, of meddling by a board member and a member of village leadership in a superintendent search, to hire the village's legal counsel as an attorney for the school district, and the commandeering of a parcel of property owned by the school district via an intergovernmental agreement with the village of Bensonville that did not benefit the children of the school district in any way.
Chris, I think that's okay. Thank you. Thank you for your service, Chris.
It has been an honor to serve the residents of Bensonville and their children and all of our stakeholders. This is a time that I will never forget. Thank you for the opportunity to serve our community.
Thank you. Chris did a nice job for a couple of years, it's been a lot of good things.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, even though we were fighting when you first got out.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. Any other presentations?
Nope.
Okay. That brings us to our consent agenda. Do I have any requests to have anything removed from the consent agenda this evening?
Administrative reports.
Oh, Ms. Krajecchi, thank you.
What are you going to do about me?
Administrative reports, yeah, we got it, got it, that's right, that's exactly right. Administrative reports, Mr. Novak?
There aren't any tonight.
Aren't any tonight, okay. Consent agenda, any requests to have anything removed from the consent agenda? No? All right, hearing none, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I motion.
How about a second?
I'll second for all times sake.
All right. Ms. Snyder, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Krajecchi?
Aye.
Mr. Stoltman, I mean, Mr. Ladadio?
Aye.
Mrs. Die?
Aye.
Mrs. Leyva?
Aye.
Mr. Stoltman?
Aye.
Dr. McCullough?
Aye.
Ms. Parthamos?
Aye.
Okay, that brings us to our final action for the evening, which is the proclamation of winners of the April 4th, 2023 Consolidated Election. So, according to the official canvas of the consolidated general election held on April 4th, 2023, I proclaim the following elected to the Board of Education. For member of the Board of Education to serve in an unexpired two-year term, ending in 2025, Mr. Bob Ladadio. With a total of 1,312 votes.
You're welcome.
For member of the Board of Education to serve a four-year term, ending in 2027, Mrs. Anita Miller with a total of 1,074 votes. Mrs. Victoria Gonzalez with a total of 1,012 votes. Ms. Jacqueline Die with a total of 1,004 votes. Mr. James E. Stoltman Jr. with a total of 945 votes. Congratulations newly-elected school board members. Dr. McCloskey?
I just want to say congratulations, and I look forward to working with each of you.
Inasmuch as there is no further business to come before this board, a motion for adjournment is needed.
I motion.
I'll second again.
Is this sign I die?
Sign I die. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? The May 3rd Special Board of Education Meeting for Bensonville School District Two is now adjourned.
Do I leave? No, you're all right.
Yes. Yes.